Certificate of election and oath of office from the town clerk. So I, Patrick J. Ward, Town Clerk of the town of Brookline, duly qualified in acting as such as having custody of the records hereby certify that the May 2nd, 2017 annual town election held in accordance with MGLC dot forty-one, Section One, Suzanne Fetterspiel, Michael A. Glover, and Julie A. Schreiner Oldham were elected members of the school committee for the town of Brookline. I further certify in accordance with MGLC dot forty-one, Section fifteen, that on May third, 2017 Suzanne Fetterspiel and Michael A. Glover, and on May fourth, 2017 Julie A. Schreiner Oldham, were sworn in to the faithful performance of their duties as members of the school committee for the town of Brookline. Let me offer my congratulations to all three of you on your election. Congratulations. And now to the business of electing Chair and Vice Chair. So the Chairman and Vice Chairman are elected to one-year terms by a majority of those members present, and unless a vote is taken to the contrary, no member may serve as Chairman for more than two consecutive one-year terms. And so at this moment, I will ask for nomination for Office of Chair.
And I would like to do so, please. I would like to nominate David Pollak as our new Chair. I've known David since we first worked, well, when he first came on the Building Commission, not even when we worked together, when he first came on the Building Commission, and then when we worked together on the Driscoll School Elevator and Cafeteria Project. That was probably ten years ago, maybe more even, at this point. So it's quite a long time, so I can really vouch for his, these qualities that I'm going to talk about. David's leadership qualities. David's a very smart man. He's caring, and he's collaborative. I've seen him try to build consensus among people, and I think that's a piece of leadership that is very important to the school committee. And most of all, he's an all-around nice guy. So I would like to make a motion to have, to put forward David as Chair of the Brookline School Committee, David Pollak.
Thank you, Ms. Charlofsky. Is there a second to that nomination? Thank you, Ms. Jan Jackson.
We can call the vote.
Are there other nominations?
I don't have another nomination, but I have another supporting, a supporting comment, if that's okay. It's my pleasure to third the nomination. For the past year, David Pollak has been exemplary Vice Chair. When he took the position one short year ago, we had a different Superintendent, we had two different Deputy Superintendents, we had a different High School Headmaster, we had different Principals at Pierce, Lawrence, and Lincoln, we had interim Principals at Runkel and Heath, and we had six unsettled union contracts. In addition to permanently filling those nine leadership roles, this year, we've settled, we've settled important policies and trainings on Title Six and Title Nine, anti-arrestment, anti-bullying. We've settled fees for low-income students, among other things. On finance, which he has been a careful watch, taken a careful watch on, we've retooled the budget under Mary Allen's leadership and made it much more clear and intelligible, and David's keen eye has been incredibly important on that, and made many other important advances to the voters. Closest to David's heart, we've made important progress on capital, and there are seven items of note. We have a new robust enrollment report under his leadership as Chair, and enrollment projections, again, under the important work of Mary Allen Dunn. We have a robust facilities report on the state of all of our buildings, which we didn't have before. We've selected a site and moved forward with the ninth school process and the high school process. We're in a position to ask town meeting for funding for the next phase of work. We're contemplating a new beat building, and our, last but not least, our biggest project in history, Devotion, is still on time and on budget, all under his leadership as the Capitol Chair. Throughout this, and only in his fourth committee as a school committee member, his fourth year as a school committee member, he has risen to the occasion of a co-leader of this committee. I'm eternally grateful for his fellowship, his sharper humor, his even sharper vision, and of course, his long-winded philosophical discourses on just about everything. I'm excited to end meetings on time, for the first time in three years, and we couldn't be in better hands, and I proudly third the nomination.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? So I, correct, Ms. Coin, I call for a vote to close nominations?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to call a vote to close nominations. All those in favor of closing nominations? Okay. Ms. Coin, would you poll the school committee on roll call vote for the Office of Chair?
Yes.
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 Congratulations. So now, I will ask for nominations for the Office of Vice Chair. Mr. Chang?
Yes, it's my distinct pleasure to nominate Michael Glover as our Vice Chair for this coming year, and I have a few things to say. As most of my colleague knows, I'm probably the most brief, and probably the quiet one, but at the same time, I have enjoyed working with Michael on negotiations and had a wonderful chance to obviously discuss and debate a number of important issues around the expansion of the ninth school, Brookline High School, the ninth grade academy that we're thinking about doing. And I have always found him to have incredibly lucid judgment. He also, at the same time, focused very clearly on what needs to be solved, and really kind of has a clear critical path to those objectives, which I find as fellow brethrens, if you will, in terms of the way we solve problems. So it has been a tremendous pleasure working with him the last three years, and I am highly enthusiastic that he will be a wonderful Vice Chair for this coming year.
Is there a second to that nomination? Ms. Schreiner Oldham? Any additional nominations or comment?
We can't let Susan get away with everything. I didn't plan on saying anything, but I must say that I truly appreciate all the work that Mr. Glover has done on the committee. I think he has raised very thoughtful questions, important items that, and he's really been great to work with, and so I wholeheartedly third the nomination.
Thank you, Ms. Charlofsky. As a first, a vote to close nominations. All those in favor of closing nominations? Okay. Ms. Coin, would you poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Upstate.
Yes.
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 Congratulations, Mr. Glover. And at this point, I get to turn over my five minutes with the gavel to our new Chair.
Yes, so we also need, we also, we also need, the school committee needs a secretary, and I would very much like to nominate our executive assistant to continue as our secretary, and I would ask for a second. Ms. Scotto, and I would like to call for a vote, I guess this is maybe another roll call vote? No? Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so just very briefly, I won't wax philosophical. It is with humility and excitement that I take up this role. I've been, you know, been thinking about it for a long time, and just how much of an opportunity it offers me to learn and grow. And we don't always get those kinds of opportunities as we advance in age, and so that's the source of both my humility and excitement. I'm very thrilled to have Mr. Glover serving with me in your leadership. I am very excited to serve with all of you. This is a wonderful group of people, and I am grateful for your commitment and everything else that you bring to the committee. And then, on a subject that I will have more words on in the future, I just want to say that how grateful I am for having served with Ms. Dickoff for the last year and learning the ropes of leadership of the school committee. I have learned a lot, and how equally grateful I am that now that she is no longer the Chair, she is still at our table. So with that, let's get to work. The calendar, Ms. Coin. So we continue to have many, many meetings between now and the, and the end of the school year, and there are lots of subcommittee meetings of the school committee, starting with the Capitol Subcommittee on Tuesday, which is going to meet from four to 5:30, and it's going to break off early because we need to, that's when the Building Commission is having its meeting and will be taking up school projects. They're meeting at five this month, rather than six, and they agreed to put off their Capitol, their discussions of school projects until 5:30, so they'll be talking about the Devotion project, and Ms. Charlofsky and I often try to make that meeting, so we'll be meeting from, Capitol will be meeting from four to 5:30 on Tuesday. You can see all the other subcommittee meetings. The Building Committees also, there are three dates, Tuesday morning for the ninth elementary school at Baldwin Building Committee meeting, and then also May 23rd and June 13th. I don't see the High School Building Committee meetings.
We don't have an.
There are none scheduled currently, and I think, does anybody else want to point out any, well, there's the Steps to Success Gala on Wednesday night. It's a big event, and yes.
I have a correction to the calendar. The school finance Subcommittee meeting was moved to May 22nd.
Oh, good.
So it's not on the 15th?
Not on the 15th, Monday, May 22nd, at its usual time, eight thirty a.m.
We have a consent agenda, which includes the acceptance of funds, and establishment of the Serrato Marks Family Scholarship, and an out-of-country student trip for the Model United Nations to Berlin. And so, I'm, how do I do this? Ms. Dickoff, do I move the consent agenda? Okay, I move the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, and we are on to Subcommittee and Liaison Reports.
Chairman, just one note. I would presume Ms. Fetterspiel would like to abstain from the, oh, no, there are no minutes, never mind, sorry. There are no minutes.
But on that subject in general, Ms. Fetterspiel, as you, you know, go from zero to ninety in 3.2 seconds, feel free to abstain from votes as we get started. Okay. Ms. Stram, do you have a finance report?
No updates from our last meeting, but I will just let folks know what the agenda is for our upcoming meeting. We will plan to review the third quarter financial report, and also have updates on the rollouts of some of the finance-related policies that have been implemented this year, as well as audits.
Thank you. So I will give the Capitol Improvement Subcommittee Report briefly. As everybody knows, there's endless amounts of things going on with Capitol, but often they're on our agenda for later in the evening. The Capitol Subcommittee met last Thursday and had two, two discussions. The first is doctored for later in this meeting, which is the presentation of the early education building on Harvard Street, and so we previewed that presentation. We were impressed, we gave some comments back to the, to the people that were presenting, the architects and the lawyers representing the donor. And then, we also had a, just the opening of a discussion on rental, the rent, the rental of space, sort of on an hourly, well, actually, on all bases, within the school buildings. And the short story on that, that's going to continue, and that will be taken up again in next week's Capitol Subcommittee meeting, but the short version is that we're, our spaces are very popular, and there's getting to be significant competition, particularly for the two to five p.m. afternoon hours, from a lot of different users that want to be in the schools. And as we all know, the teachers also kind of like to be able to continue to get their classrooms set up during that period of time, and don't necessarily want to be shooed out for any other kind of activity that might want to use that room during, during that early afternoon. So more to come on that out of Capitol Subcommittee, but it was discussed. And the Ninth School Building Committee, again, is meeting on Tuesday, and it's also on the agenda for a, an executive session later this evening to talk about, really, the legal challenges and, and issues that are being broadly discussed right now about that project. And we have some minor business on the High School Building Committee, and I'll ask the Co-Chair of that committee, Ms. Dickoff, to take it up there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So last night, the Brookline High School Expansion Committee met for about two and a half hours. It was a rich discussion of the different options on the table, options one, two, three, and then there were four options for option four, which we had all discussed one week ago tonight. After a large amount of discussion, and we started by summarizing what we've heard from public comment. There were probably upwards of fifty individuals over a number of different meetings who provided public comment, in person and online, and then we went around, we heard from each of the individuals on the Building Committee, and in the end, there was unanimous support. It was a fourteen to zero vote for option four D specifically. There was a lot of interest in the separate science wing, as well as interest in, if possible, moving over the tracks, recognizing that that was not a sure thing, but that it should be pursued as an option. And if it was not possible, then we would, you know, there are other things to do, but that seemed like what people were most interested in trying out. Mr. Cole, who is on the Building Commission, is the Co-Chair with me, cited Mr. Glover's experience in this area, and his own experience in this area, and informed the committee that it would by no means be a sure thing, and that there would be, need to be a lot of conversation about that. And so you may be getting a phone call, Mr. Vice Chairman, from Mr. Cole, about, about how to proceed on that. Second, the, as we've discussed, and we, through email, we emailed the Building Commission today as well, so it's, we're kind of at the end of this phase of feasibility, and so we are going to town meeting for additional funds to fund further feasibility and schematics. And so what that means is that we need an RFQ to, to, for an architect and project management services. So Ray Masack, who is our, in the Building Department and is our project manager, is doing a terrific job, sort of shepherding us through all of the municipal pieces of that, but what we need to do as the using agency is request that, that the Building Commission support us to prepare and distribute an RFQ. So I think the Building Committee, BHS Building Committee is really excited to move to the next stage. They're excited that there was unanimous vote, they are excited that it really seemed to be, you know, a confluence of what the neighbors were asking for, especially the Brinkton Road neighbors, about 111 Cypress. The costs, there were so many much more cost-prohibitive things that they, people were worried about. It's $350 million to do some of the schemes, and this one is in the $135 million range, and accomplishes, you know, most, if not almost all, of the education plan objectives for a fraction of what the full build-out, the $350 million option was. And, you know, obviously, the, you know, first and foremost, it was just great to hear from Anthony and Janay, kind of the, the discussions at the high school in different ways, that they're excited about teaching differently, not only once these buildings come into fruition, but also in the meantime, that don't require capital changes to be able to do. So I will move, so I guess we also have to appoint members to a committee of seven, is that right, Mr. Pollak?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess why, we, we need to vote to request that the Building Commission support us in preparing and distributing the RFQ, and we have to vote members?
So, but it's two, it's one committee of seven that's going to both put out two RFQs, one for project management services, and?
I can look at, I'm not exactly sure. I think we just, we need to request that they sort of.
Convene a committee of seven?
Yeah, that they convene a committee of seven. Exactly. I can look at the exact.
I actually think it would be smart to have the same people on both.
Right. My question is, is, are we also asking the Building Commission to convene a, a committee of seven, which would be the same group, I'm sure, to put out an RFQ for project management services? So it's sort of two requests?
Oh, okay. That makes more sense.
I think.
That makes more sense, because it would be a different person?
Oh, yes. The designer is one, RF, two separate RFQs, to two separate kinds of things.
Okay. Okay, so then we need, and we need members of a committee of seven.
Well, we'll get to that.
Okay, we'll get to that. Okay, so that's, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the, the motion is that we vote to ask the, to request that the Building Commission convenes a committee of seven for the purpose of designer selection for the continuing work on the Brookline High School Expansion Project.
The way we were, we were wording it is further feasibility and schematic design, architectural services related to further feasibility and schematic design. Does that sound okay to you?
So, right, and then why don't we just vote that, and then we'll do a second vote for a committee of seven for the project management services? So discussion. All in favor? Very well, and, and one abstention. Thank you very much, and then a second motion?
So who, who, to, we vote to appoint three people?
No, no, it's, well, I was just going to do a motion, I was asking for, I was requesting a motion that we ask the Building Commission to convene a committee of seven to seek services for project management.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, and I would suggest that we put forward as the three, so a committee of seven, under Town Bylaw 3.7, which is the bylaw that essentially creates, and then, it's all about how buildings get produced, and it's basically, that section of the bylaws is called the Building Commission, more or less. And the process for doing a Capitol project is that the using agency comes forward and requests of the Building Commission that it has a need, documents the need, and then when you get to designer selection, a committee of seven is convened with three representatives from the using agency, three representatives from the Building Commission, which is a five-member appointed board, and then it's chaired by a member of the Board of Selectmen. And I would respectfully suggest that we send Ms. Charlofsky, Ms. Dickoff, and myself as representatives to these two committees of seven. Any discussion? Okay, thank you very much.
That's my report.
And then, yes, all right.
I've already messed up. Okay, I have one more, one more note. So after our last, last week, you'll recall that we had an executive session for the purposes of discussing the contract with respect to the vote we just took. As it turns out, we were, that was not one of the permissible uses of executive session. You cannot go into executive session to discuss vendor contracts. So there are two remedies to this. One is to announce that, and the second is to release the minutes from that executive session, so that anybody who wants to know what we talked about can hear that. So that will happen, FYI. That's it.
Thank you. And the last piece of my Capitol Subcommittee report is to joyfully announce that on my appeal, Ms. Charlofsky has agreed to take up the mantle of Chair of the Capitol Subcommittee henceforth. All right. Curriculum, Ms. Scotto.
There is nothing new to report, but I do want to encourage people to come to the curriculum meeting. Our next Subcommittee meeting will be on May 18th, and it will concern itself with the data report that's being planned, that's being produced, having to do with students who have, who have had, students who are not succeeding in the way that we would like them to succeed. So we will be looking at a, a lot of data that Mr. Lummis has put together, things like what courses they were recommended for at the high school, what they took, how many AP courses, how many honors courses, just a good look at the data to help us see where there are points that we could be doing things differently that would have an effect on these students in terms of their success. So that meeting will be devoted to that. We are also having two school improvement plan meetings. One at Devotion at 7:00 a.m., that will meet at Lower Devotion, and one at 4:45. I actually believe that data report, that, the data report, I've got, these dates are together, one is on the, the curriculum meeting is on the 17th. The two, yeah, it's at 8:30. The two other meetings will be on the 18th. One at 7:00 a.m. at Lower Devo, it's a school improvement plan report, and the other one at 4:45 in the afternoon, when the, the new principals of Pierce and Lawrence will be coming to talk to us. These school improvement plan meetings have been very successful this year, we've done a couple of them already, and it combines teachers, parents, school committee members, and it's a chance to have some conversation about what is happening in the school, to find out what people's concerns are, how the school improvement plan for 2016-17 has worked out, in some cases, what they're thinking about for 2017-2018. So these have been very productive meetings, and we invite all of you to come. The meeting at 4:45, which will be on the fourth floor in the conference room, will really focus on the new principals and things that they have, they would like to tell us about their first, their first year in Brookline. One of these principals, of course, will be leaving at the end of the year, but we still would like to have his feedback about what is working, what isn't working, what are the strengths of the school, and so forth. So I encourage you all to come. And that's all I have to say.
All right, so we do actually have a policy, which we, which.
I think government relations.
Oh, did I skip over government relations? I'm sorry. Ms. Charlofsky.
I may not do Capitol if you're free. Don't, no, kidding. Actually, this afternoon, Ms. Fetterspiel and I had the pleasure of going down to the State House to the, a legislative briefing. Remember, I, last week, Bright program, and that they were joining forces, actually, with the Children's Mental Health Campaign, and so they did a presentation of Bright, including some of the history, that obviously, as everybody here knows, Brookline was the first, we began it in collaboration with the Mental Health Center through. Health Center through Robert Wood Johnson grant and a grant from the Blue Cross Blue Shield Foundation. And so Dr. White spoke about the need. Catherine Houley spoke about the, the model that we use, and that is being used now in 50 communities across the state. 25 more are being lined up right now, and there are 24 communities, other communities that have expressed interest. There were presentations from Westboro High School, which is doing a little bit of a different model, not exactly what, what we've been doing or some of the other schools. Each one sort of has a little bit of a little twist on it, but then Dr. Jackman from the Boston Arts Academy spoke about their program. They got a grant from a foundation to begin it, and they're working with the Brookline Mental Health Center on this. And then a parent from Wellesley and a student from Amherst spoke about their experiences of being in the program, and how much that has, well, how it helped them to graduate high school. The parent that spoke, her daughter is now graduating college, and that without it, they probably wouldn't, well, the statistics are that about 50% of kids with mental health issues don't, serious mental health issues don't graduate high school. So all in all, it was, and so there were many, a couple legislators there, many legislative aides attended, and I think it's a, you know, we should be very proud that we were the first to do this, and to think of it, and to try and address this issue. And just wanted to share that. And Ms. Federschmidt and I had some nice time together.
Do you want to add anything?
Yes, of course.
Well, actually, you summed it up, but I would just like to repeat that we should be very proud that now 50 communities are now modeling their program after our program, and that it's really been quite successful. So it was, it was a good moment to see us there, and it was, it was worthwhile. So I think the program is alive and well here, and it's, it's being, again, it's spreading throughout the Commonwealth. That's good news.
Thank you. All right. So we actually have a policy to review. I think that it's gotten all squared up in terms of review from town council, and this is the signature policy. Are you prepared, Mr. Glover, to walk us through it, or you want?
I am. I don't know who the chair of this subcommittee is, and I won't ask who he is, but I will lead us through, lead us through, lead us through this exercise.
Thank you so much.
So there, there have been a few changes. Ms. Dunn, I think, I think they're pretty self-explanatory, so I won't ask you to come forward. They look like they're, they're clarifying changes. I would like to move this with a couple of very minor revisions, unless Ms. Dunn has objection to it. One of which is somewhat substantive, and two of which are just, just cleanup. The substantive one is in Section 2, where there's a reference to $99,999 and 99 cents. I believe that should actually be $100,000. Okay, well, let's discuss it here.
So we, I had Dave Jenikakis, the purchasing officer in the room, Mike DiPietro, the town controller, as well as Jonathan Simpson, the associate town council. The reason why it's written that way is because you cannot have two signatories on a $100,000 contract. So it prevents me from being able to sign a $100,000 contract. That's why it says nine, that's why it says $99,999 and 99 cents.
But the way it's written, if there was a contract for $99,999-
I would sign it.
No, you wouldn't be able to.
If there's one, there's one penny that's not allowed. So it needs to be less than or equal to-
Okay. All right. Well, because it, so that, so we talked about, like, if it says $100,000, you can't have, you allow me to-
How about less than or equal to?
Well, why not less than $100,000?
That's fine.
Because, yeah.
Less than $100?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. And then the only minor-
The normal course of municipal finances is that that just works, that language, so they'll work with it. It, the likelihood of it ever happening is rare. You're not gonna sweat it.
We figure out how to-
I wanted to at least let you know we'd have the discussion about it.
Well, thank you for that. I think that's helpful. And then the only other minor change I would like to make, just to make it as clean as possible, I'd like to remove the defined term from the very first paragraph, SBA, and I would like to change SBA in the second paragraph to school business administrator. Reason being is that, that's the only place where that defined term is used. We use school business administrator throughout, and I'd just like to be consistent throughout. So I will move this policy with these amendments. Is there a second?
Do you, is, can I have a tw-? People down those spots?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, from the first and the second paragraph. Yes, thank you.
We have a second, Ms. Stram. Discussion.
I'm just curious, I know that you had raised several questions, David, and I'm curious if we have the answers to, to those questions, if you wanna-
Right. Well, I didn't bring them with me, but Ms. Dunn, I just was, I had some, okay, fine. Right. So I guess, so the way this is, I just wanted to get confirmation, the way this appears to be worded, what we're really saying is that whoever is the finance subcommittee chair, and whoever is the capital subcommittee chair, will be able to be the signatory, and they don't actually have to be ever voted by name, as long as that's their role. And so then, for the alternate, how do we designate the alternate?
So the committee would designate in, sort of, as we envisioned, or I envisioned, and others, is that there would be one alternate, because of the likelihood that we would need an alternate. So the committee would vote the alternate, just like it makes all of its other committee assignments and liaison assignments. And-
So that would be like a, that we would, we would designate the alternate signatory to be the chair of, of a different subcommittee, or-
Or just a member.
Or could be-
Could be, could be a member.
By name?
By name. And that could sit there for, until you need to change that name. There's no terminate, there's no, there's no expiration, thank you, for, for that appointment.
Okay. And is that everybody's pleasure, or would we like to somehow tag it to also a role so that it would all be perpetual?
If I could, the way I read it, and I may not be reading it correctly, it says the school committee shall vote to designate an alternate signatory, should there be a vacancy or absence. Oh, that's in addition to either-
Yes.
Oh, take it back.
This is just if, if, if signatures, well, no, if, they don't, do they sub for each other?
No.
No. So if-
Alternate subs for-
If the finance subcommittee chair is on vacation, and it's, and something needs to be signed, so paperwork can be moved upstairs to the Board of Selectmen or whatever, then staff knows who the alternate is. So we need to designate an alternate when that person isn't around. I mean, we could designate the alternate as the capital subcommittee chair, could be the alternate to the finance subcommittee chair, and they could each back up each other.
You can decide, this leaves this open, this policy leaves it open in terms of what you want, how you want to organize that.
Okay.
That there's an alternate name.
So I think I'm satisfied. Thank you. Other discussion? Okay. So we have a, we have a motion and a second, and I will call the question. All in favor of this policy? Any against? Any abstentions? One abstention. Thank you very much. So Ms. Dunn, would you like us to deal with the issue of designating an alternate now, or we can do that another time?
You can do it when you're doing your, your other needs on. Or you can do it for yourself.
Well, does, would anybody like to try to solve that issue now? Can we do it quickly?
It could be done on the fly. It's not something that has to be sort of established, and if you find yourself in a situation where that needs to be done.
Well, if you're needing to sign a warrant, if you're needing to sign the warrant and that person is not available, do we need the alternate so they would know who they're calling to get the signature?
What do people think of my suggestion that the capital subcommittee chair could serve as alternate for finance, and the finance subcommittee chair could serve as alternate for capital? Is that-
I think it's terrific.
I was actually going to propose that the, the chair of the school committee serve as that alternate, to ensure that, that the person serving as the alternate has a broad sense of-
Is that a, is that a motion?
That is, that is, that is you, sir.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor? Done. Thank you. Additional liaisons and updates? Yes. Ms. Tarlefsky.
So, I'm sorry. I forgot to report last time that I had been to the Baker School on, I can't remember which night it was, when there was an incredible talk by Dr. Stacy Blake Beard on unconscious It was, the talk was entitled Building Stronger School Communities by Understanding Unconscious Bias, and was put on by Brookline Talks, which is a group I actually don't know that much about. But I, I think it began in Baker, and they invited the whole community. It was a decent turnout. It was a difficult night. It was raining and, and very difficult for people to get there, I think. But the people who were there were really engaged. She's an incredible speaker, has a way of engaging the whole group. I mean, this was, you know, that auditorium is not an easy place to engage people, but people were totally involved. And I do have a copy, actually, of her slide deck and some resource lists that I can send out to the rest of the committee that was sent out by the, the people. And this is just the first talk. My sense is that there'll be more coming from this committee, and maybe Ms. Schreiner Oldham knows more about Brookline Talks. But I do know there was, this particular talk was sponsored by the, by all the elementary school PTOs and the high school PTO, the Brookline Education Foundation, the Brooklyn Community Mental Health Center, and the Public Library of Brookline.
So it's actually, the Brookline Talks group is actually all of those organizations that have come together, and so every year they have about six, each year they have about six speakers that come, and so all of the PTOs and the other organizations pool together money. And so rather than each school individually trying to spend, you know, a large sum to bring in these excellent speakers, they're for the whole community, so they are able to bring in a speaker. They're doing the, there's a documentary called Screenagers, for example, and that's one of the ones that's being brought in by Brookline Talks later in the year. And so throughout the year, they just have these wonderful speakers that come, and that was one that, a team from Baker actually found the speaker and invited them to come and was part of this Brookline Talks group.
And the wonderful thing is she's right here at Simmons, so we could maybe even tap into her again. She's a professor at Simmons. So just wanted to make sure that everybody knew about that, and actually that the community knew about that, too. Thank you.
Ms. Jennings.
The Brookline High School Student Council, I believe in two weeks, is voting for a new representative. So I, I think I have either one or two meetings left, and then I'll like, try and have, I'll try and hand off to the next person for the end of this school year, to the next one. So that's, thought you should, thought you actually know.
Other liaison reports. It is time for public comment. We have two people signed up for public comment. Oh, is the microphone on? Is it green?
Testing.
Excellent.
Thanks, David. First of all, I'd like to, I'd like to congratulate Julie and Michael and Susan on their victories, and thank Paul Harris for running. I think he added a lot to the campaign, and I hope that the, the margin of defeat had nothing to do with his age or his gender. I'm sure that Michael continued to serve the town in various capacities as he has in the past, perhaps even as a school committee member in the future. But I came here today to ask, or to speak again about the Minority Student Achievement Network. I understand that we've had, we had a contingent out there last week, and as a segue, Helen, I want to thank you for that information on unconscious bias, and request if you could forward me a copy of those materials as well. Okay. I hope that your initial, forgetting that was an unconscious bias, forgetting, but I understand that a member of our contingent last week actually led a breakout session at the Minority Student Achievement Network Annual Conference in Madison, Wisconsin, at the Madison Concourse Hotel, just a mere mile from where my daughter lives and goes to school. I haven't met the individual, but his name's Gabriel McCormick, I understand, and he's been director of professional development since 2010 for his LinkedIn page. Feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, superintendent. But the, the breakout session, let me just read from my notes here, which I wasn't able to print out, but it was called No Single Answer: A Multiple Methods Approach to District Equity. In this session, participants will learn how the public schools of Brookline, Mass are developing a plan for improving racial equity and eliminating structural barriers to student access while also supporting ongoing grassroots work. This combined top-down and bottoms-up approach focuses initially on a variety of professional learning opportunities in order to normalize conversations about race and racism among adults. Integrating broad initiatives from central, sorry, from central management and leadership development alongside organically developed site-specific approaches that already exist in our schools, our district's approach helps to establish a strong knowledge base from which to make necessary structural changes by adopting James Baldwin's claim that nothing can be changed until it's faced. In this session, participants will learn about Brookline's process and plan, how they might adapt a similar approach within their own context. It says this session is mostly directed, direct aim towards district administrators, and a similar approach would be visible at the building level as well. So I'm anxious to learn more about that, and if there's a, a deck of PowerPoint slides or something that could be forwarded along or posted on the website, much appreciated. And commendations to taking the initiative to step up and have a leadership role nationally. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you. Mr. Haller.
Three, still three minutes, yeah. Actually, it says three to five.
Three to five minutes, then you got it.
I'm gonna take about one.
Tough negotiator.
I'll take about one. I'm Craig Haller, co-chair of CPAC, and in that position, I want to thank Susan for, you know, this year our interfacing, and definitely Ben, but we did, you know, some good communication back and forth. And not in the position of CPAC chair, but with the backing of a lot of people, sincere congratulations to Suzanne, Michael, and Julie. That was, it was a good campaign, and we're really looking forward to working with the entire school committee this year. CPAC itself is growing stronger. We had a meeting last night, we're figuring out our board and our people, and we had a better turnout than we have in years past. So you'll be seeing, hopefully, a lot more of us. And I just wanted to mention, I don't think a lot of people sit back and realize the incredible responsibility that you have, members of the school committee. I thought about running, as some of you know, and I just- I thought about running, as some of you know, and I decided not to for various reasons. But I work with many, many school districts and sometimes deal with school committees. And it really is an awesome responsibility because ultimately, our children's health, safety, future, and education are in your hands, even if you're just discussing where the next building might be or what it looks like. We're talking about money issues and the various issues. I sent my severely disabled daughter into your hands for 19 years. And she would come home every day. There's one fateful day, which wasn't so good, but every day she would come home to me. And she couldn't give me a report on the day, couldn't tell me anything. I knew nothing. And I had to do that every day. And that was tough. But I had faith in the school district, faith in the school committee, and in the teachers and the powers and in the entire community. So, as you're starting, maybe not a new year, but a new... With a new team, you are appreciated by probably the entire community. And you have a really tough job. And so, personally, I wish you luck and Godspeed. I will be here again, most likely, as co-chair of CPAC. So, if you don't do your job, we'll tell you. But you have our full support. You have my personal support, every one of you. Thank you, and good luck with the coming year.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? All right. Thank you very much. It is now time for the superintendent's report.
So, it's been a week since the last superintendent report. So, a few important updates. I want to start with the great things happening in our schools, continuing our work over the course of the year, having learning walks in each of our schools. This week, we had two, one in Pierce, that I had the pleasure of joining the team, four and one today at Lincoln, that Deputy Superintendent Nicole Gittens had the opportunity of joining and leading. At Pierce, Principal Chris Kelly planned the visit. We had the opportunity to spend time in kindergarten and first-grade classes in the historic building, as well as fourth and fifth grade classes, second grade class in the main building, seventh grade math and art classrooms. At Lincoln today, the team was throughout the school again, from kindergarten to sixth grade math to fourth grade, across the whole school. And as with all these visits in both schools, there was incredible student work displayed, educators confronting with students, students taking ownership of their learning, clear differentiation of instruction, evidence of cooperative learning, and really many interdisciplinary lessons. So, as I've reported on the learning walks at the previous schools, wanted to continue to share the great things that are happening. I had the pleasure of spending time today at Upper Devotion School. I went into an eighth-grade science class. And I will note that when I walked in, all the shades were down. And I thought, well, this is curious. It's such a beautiful day. And then, I noticed all the light bulbs set up around the outside of the room. And today was a lab day where students were exploring... Doing a lab to understand the phases of the moon and then to apply their understanding of the phases of the moon to be able to explain what is happening during both solar and lunar eclipses. It was an amazing lesson. And equally amazing, eighth grade... Continued eighth grade math class solving an extremely complex, challenging, and deeply engaging problem. You know, sometimes problems are really challenging and not engaging. And this just pulled in both Principal Crowley and me. We didn't want to leave. We wanted to figure out the equation that students were trying to solve. It was absolutely a wonderful lesson. We observed in Spanish and French classes. And I received a letter from the Spanish class, which I have attached for the committee on the next page, a persuasive letter written by the Spanish class explaining the perils of... I'm happy to translate it for everyone. But the... Explaining the perils of plastic used in our schools, the consequences of the plastic on our planet. And then, suggestions, many suggestions for improving that at both within devotion school and the positive impacts for devotion and how those would also be positive impacts for our environment. So, I share this for many reasons. It is incredible work led, you know, done by our students, led by an incredibly dynamic Spanish educator. And you can see a very persuasive... Like I said, happy to... Happy to read... Would you like me to read it? Yeah. So, the whole class signed it. And really, if you... The last paragraph, the students are really making the argument that we need to reduce the use of plastics in our school cafeterias. They suggested, for example, wrapping these silverware. I use that term loosely there. The plastic forks and knives in paper rather than plastic because ironically, the plastic forks are wrapped in plastic to reduce waste. They recommend using actual silverware that could be washed on a daily basis to reduce the use of plastic. Also, having much more recycling and building the capacity of not just recycle bottles, but to recycle all the different types of plastics that are used. So, just a remarkable letter that I share with you. Some really great work.
Are they also requesting composting?
Yes, they are requesting composting. So, at the... I think on the back... No, at the bottom of the first page, they also are requesting composting as a way to reduce waste. They would like an organic trash barrel for fruits and vegetables so they can have the organic compost for any waste, so.
Ms. Charlofsky, do you think that's something that Ms. Dunn that we could at least respond to in the capital subcommittee? Awesome.
And I will be responding to the students. So, I will speak with you, Ms. Dunn, and we will pen our response in the appropriate language to students and their letter, so. Lawrence Principal Search update. We've had a very in-depth and rigorous process. I updated the committee on first-round interviews done by a committee of educators, parents, and administrators. Vice Principal Anthony Meyer, our Director of K-8 Science, our Curriculum Coordinator, and myself. We've had second-round interviews. And tomorrow, a small team of parents and teachers, along with Lawrence Vice Principal, are joining me for two site visits at the schools of the two finalists. So, we will be doing that tomorrow. And then, at the end of that, we'll be making decisions about the final, possible final steps of the process. So, we will be spending the day, like I said, half a day at one school, half a day at the other. And I still expect to be able to name our preferred candidate at the next school committee meeting. And lastly, as you know, this week, The Globe published an article concerning water testing results throughout the Commonwealth, including Brookline. The article was based on MWRA testing that was done in June of last year, June 2016. And at that time, two water sources, one specific source at Pierce School and several at the Lower Devotion School were identified as having lead levels that were above EPA requirements for safe drinking water. And as you saw in the letters that went out to both communities, as well as a district-wide letter that went out today, all of those were remedied by joint work between the school department, the building department, the water department, the public health department to remedy those issues. So, the letters to Pierce and devotion were sent out on Wednesday. Attached to the superintendent report are copies of those letters, as well as a letter that went out to all families today. And at the back of that letter, if you did not have a chance to read the copy on the initial one, the building department immediately turned off the water. Pierce Primary was not in use, but immediately turned off the water at that unit and the three other units in the building. So, there are four in the Pierce Primary. Replaced plumbing, piping, fixtures, and the water fountains that were a part of those single-unit units. And then, the MWRA did not have the capacity, once that work was done, to test. So, the building department contracted with Yee Consulting Group, which took 12 samples in the building at that time from different sinks and water fountains throughout Pierce Primary. All those samples passed. And the memo from Yee Consulting with the levels that was reported to the building department on August 2, 2016, was forwarded to Pierce families earlier this week. At the devotion school, the one thing to note is that the MWRA had not updated their database from the Yee Consulting report, which has now been updated. The MWRA does update their database based on private testing, and that had not been updated by them on August 2, but it is now updated. At the lower devotion in the rental building, a number of tests were done as a part of the build-out, preparing for students to move in. And there were a number of areas identified that were all shut off. Many of them were remedied before school opened by replacing pipes and fixtures and a combination. There were two areas that were not able to be remedied before school opened, but they remained off. The water remained off. One specifically was a water fountain on the eighth floor. And there was water, bottled water provided, bubbler on the eighth floor, while the length of pipe... There was a length of pipe that was replaced from the ground floor up, from my understanding. And once that was done and the subsequent work was finished, testing was done again. And you'll see on the final page, the letter that went out to all families today, there was a series of tests at the 30 Webster Building that took place from 6:30, 2016, through 11:01, 2016, as work was done. Those tests were not done by Yee Consulting, but were done by... Excuse me, just one second. They were completed by... I'm sorry? Barclay Management Group. And so, those... That's in the letter that went out to the devotion families.
Just to follow up on the frequency of testing issue. I guess in my mind, there's a question, and I'm not... This is not a loaded question, of whether we should be testing more often than every five years. I don't know if folks have thoughts about that. I don't know anything about what a test... A testing regime entails, but I think it is a question we should think about.
So, maybe we could ask the Department of Public Health what their recommendations are. They're the ones who have been in charge of this all along. And I think... I don't know who replaced, actually, Dr. Balsam, but...
Dr. Chat.
Huh?
Dr. Chat.
Chat. Okay. I don't think I've met the person. But I think, you know, let's hear what the experts say, how often they need to do that. Because just to test, to test if it's not needed is... I think once you've replaced the lead pipes, I think it's hard to have a problem with them afterwards, but...
So, one thing I would point out is it's not always necessarily that the pipe is lead. It's... It could be that the fixture is brass until very recently. And brass fixtures contained a... Brass was allowed to contain trace amounts of lead. So, part of it, it's not... There are instances of buildings where it may not be the pipe, but actually the fixture. And so, there are... I just want to say that it's not...
So, I agree with you. Maybe we do need to do it sooner, but I think we need to find out what the industry standard is in terms of what... Or what the experts say is important, how often to do it.
It might be... I think at bare minimum, it might be helpful for us to understand what it really means to do the testing.
Another assignment for the Capital Improvement Subcommittee.
Oh. Sure. Happy to do it.
Other... Any questions for the superintendent on his report?
I just want to again commend the superintendent for the learning walks idea. I think this has been tried at different ways and different configurations over time with more and less success. And so, it's just exciting that there's something that the educators seem to be learning from and excited about. And so, thank you for doing that. It's exciting.
Very good. Okay. We are on to item six on our agenda, this school choice nonparticipation proposed vote. Ms. Dunn, are you presenting this? Hadn't planned on it? I have a sheet, so I'm presenting it. But I just have to find it. Ah, I do have it. The school choice law contained in the Education Reform Act of 1993 presumes that each school committee will admit non-resident students under the school choice program unless there is a vote to the contrary taken by June 1 of each year following a hearing on the issue. He further explained... I'm explaining that the Brookline School Committee combined the hearing... Wait. We are combining the hearing for this issue with the public hearing on the budget. Oh, we did this on... Oh, we already did this on March 2. So, we had a hearing on this issue. And you should all know that the historical position of the school committee has been that the way we participate in choices through participation in the Medco program, the school choice reimbursement rate is substantially less than the cost of educating one of our students. And as we know, we don't have excess capacity in our buildings. So, on that basis, I guess I will move that we vote non... That Brookline should continue to not participate in school choice.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Thank you very much. Yes, please.
So, if the committee will indulge me, I'd like to add, this wasn't in my superintendent report, but given the presentation that we're about to receive, I just... I'd like to add a few BEEP updates. This May, we're hosting six principals from Singapore for two days at our BEEP programs. They'll be shadowing Barbara, Regina, and Vicky. The programs in Singapore are looking at inclusive early education classrooms and implementing them because at this point, many of the schools do not include students with special needs with their typical peers. So, it really speaks very highly of the inclusive work that our early childhood educators do. Following that, in June, 30 educators from Barbados are coming to visit BEEP classrooms to observe project-based early childhood classrooms with inclusive educational environments. March and April, we hosted... The BEEP classes... Programs hosted two independent school math specialists who came to look at math integration. One came especially for BEEP's own March Madness, which is known in BEEP as Math Madness, where families come into classes to share math morning with children. And the BEEP programs have begun a free Saturday STEM playgroup at the Lynch Center. It's open to all families, although registration is required. And there are six STEM Saturdays before the close of school. So, I just wanted to highlight the great work that our BEEP team does prior to the presentation that is now doctored. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We have guests. And I will turn the floor over to you. And you can introduce yourselves and introduce this wonderful and exciting project. Yeah, because the microphone is part of the...
I don't have a good side, Helen. You all know that. So, for the record, my name's Bobby Allen. I have a law practice here at 300 Washington Street. My partner, Jennifer Gilbert, is with me, as well as Alfred Worszczowski and Stephen Laput. Alfred will be up giving the presentation. He's the architect. So, for some of you that have been in town for a long time, I'm going to bring up a... There was a time when the town was looking for a place for our seniors. And it was an 11-year project to get what's known as the Senior Center. And it wouldn't have ever happened if it wasn't for a man named Roger Stern, who donated a plot of land. a plot of land. And probably a $2 or $3 million value at the time, a lot more now. But he donated the land, the town took over, the town built it, the town furnished it. And I don't think there was any operating money, but the businesses around there, particularly some of the banks, Bay State Federal comes to mind, contributed a significant amount of money to allow it to operate. And that's how the Senior Center opened. There was a time, somewhat recently, at least in my brain, that the public library, the main library here, was in terrible disrepair. It was in need for capital improvement. On the CIP list, it was pretty far away. A group of citizens didn't like that, got together, formed this wonderful committee, raised $4 million. That kind of forced the town to match that $4 million, and the main library looks the way it does now. So my point is that there's certain times when you can go to the taxpayers, and the taxpayers are willing to fund certain things. And then there's times when you can't go to the taxpayers, and you rely on opportunities that might come along, like the Senior Center or like the library. What I'm bringing you today is a, what I believe is a significant opportunity. BEEP is a program, I don't have to tell you all the virtues of it, basically provides a wonderful foundation for K-8 program, and allows us to identify any needs that any children may have. And that need is something that allowed my client, who is a nonprofit, who purchased some property on Harvard Street, who had a child that they never thought would be able to acclimate in a regular K-8 format, and is now a thriving high schooler at Brookline High. And Vicky and her team at BEEP get a lot of the credit for that. So their way of paying back is to provide BEEP with a home. You all know better the challenges of finding home for BEEPs and the amount of money that you spend for finding home for BEEP. Well, we're presenting an opportunity my client plans on, who is, again, a nonprofit, purchased property at 127131 Harvard. You all familiar with the Stop &amp; Shop site? Okay. Well, right next to the gas station between, there's a blue building with mantard roof there, 121, 127131 Harvard. That's been purchased. We've gone through some process with preservation. And my client plans on building a early education center. And our goal is, her goal is, to have BEEP be the tenant there. Now there's a, this isn't donating land, this is donating land, this is building the building, this is furnishing it, this is walk, turn the key, walk in, the stapler's on the desk. So it's a pretty much soup to nuts. We were very excited about it. You know, in Brookline, even a gift to this level always has to go through a significant amount of process. And, you know, when clients want to donate something like this, sometimes process can be, what do you mean? I'm trying to do this. But, but we have a certain way of doing things in Brookline, and I certainly respect that. And we want to go through a process. We have a neighborhood meeting lined up. We understand we need to meet with the neighbors. We need to go through a planning process. But we do, I think, have to step back and understand, looking at the future, how many opportunities are going to come along like this, particularly an opportunity to put together a facility for BEEP that can be first class. And to show you what first class means, I'll bring up Alfred, and he can go over the proposal. Unless you have any questions for me, or we can wait till the end. David, your, your choice.
Take your way.
Okay.
So Bobby introduced you to the site on the, on the screen. It's the red rectangle, which is literally right next to the gas station, next to the piano area, piano store, and across from behind is Scrub It Up. So a couple of street views. The gas station looking south toward the blue building is, is the property. And I'm looking north from, on Harvard Street with the piano store to the right, and the blue building is the property where the proposal is for the building for BEEP. I'll show you a section through the building. The whole project is approximately 25,000 square feet of space. From top to bottom, on the lower, lowest level, at grade is a lobby welcome center. It's the front door, front entry to, to the building with a drop-off on the site, so that pick-up and drop-off actually can occur on the site. Hi, Vicky. I'm taking you into the welcome center right now on the site. And then in green are three levels of classroom and teaching space for children. The fifth level is a playground. It's actually on, in the middle of the building with outdoor space, as well as partially covered. And so that's how we create open space for kids. And then on the very top is the administrative area with offices, conference rooms, ability to meet. So the bulk, bulk of the program is focused on children, the education part, as well as the playground part. Then taking you through the schematic floor plans, the ground floor. At the top of the page is Harvard Street. Right in the center is the welcome and lobby, with the gray area being a U-shaped drop-off with different doors for entrance and into the welcome center. Elevators and staircases rising up. And then the second, third, and fourth level is classroom space. The fifth level is primarily playground, some of it undercover, a little bit indoors, but primarily all is that outdoor space for, for children. And then the building steps back further, and the offices for BEEP and conferencing occurs on six. So the building, these are multiple views. The bottom right-hand corner is a street-level view of BEEP with the lobby, drop-off, and then different views looking at the top of the page from, from the south to the north, with the building stepping back. The drawing on the, on the far left shows that outdoor play area that I was referring to. It faces predominantly toward the south, so you have nice sunlight, partially undercover. The building steps back at that fourth level for the playground and also where the offices are. And then the classrooms have plenty of natural light and just a very, very nice connection to the outside. And I'm going to end my presentation with this overall view of, of the, of the project, the streetscape, drop-off, classrooms, playground, and offices. So that, Bobby completes my, completes my...
Sure. Of course. There are, there are a number of, as I mentioned earlier, there is a process we have to go through. Jennifer's been working with Town Council's office relative to memorandum of understanding of what the terms are going to be. But this is not something that we're looking to build and rent. It would be a dollar if BEEP were, end up being the user for a certain period of time. And there's some details to be worked out relative to the planning process. We still have to go through a planning and zoning process. We anticipate using the Dover Amendment, since it's a nonprofit owner with a nonprofit use. And sometimes, you know, the Dover Amendment can have a similar sound to 40B and get neighbors very upset. So we understand that we have to work with the neighbors. That's why we're starting with a neighborhood meeting first. And then we do have a presentation before the selectmen. We thought it was important to have the users be up to speed before we go to the neighbors. And then the neighbors up to speed before we actually enter, entering into a process. So we're trying to be as sort of transparent process, and we look forward to any feedback that you all may have.
Yeah, let me just open it up to the committee for questions, comments.
So, so first of all, this is, I agree, a wonderful, wonderful opportunity, and, and I feel incredible gratitude that we have this opportunity. And I just wanted to ask you, the building, it does look like a beautiful design, but I was just curious if, if you were delighted that Vicky's here, could say more about what the collaboration has been with, you know, with Vicky and others to, to develop that design.
First, let me say that I hardly recovered from my first conversation with Laura about this opportunity. I almost couldn't believe that something this extraordinary could be a gift. And since that time, we've been invited in to talk about what our dreams were, what our hopes were. The original plans were made. This week, we met again with the architect group to talk about the needs of the community. We see an ever-increasing need for space for some of our children who are the most significantly compromised, and we want to include them as part of this planning. And so the design is being reworked to make sure that that can happen. We currently have our intake team out in South Brookline in a synagogue building, which we know is not the best possible spot to welcome families who are coming with a child with a suspected identified need. And now the intake team would be able to be accessible to public transportation and a welcoming center, and a team that was all together with meeting space that is accessible to that, and classrooms that are available for parents to see, one of which includes an observation booth, so that families can come without disrupting the general feel of the classroom and have a chance to see what that's like. That one of the classrooms, we've looked at dividing into smaller space so that children with an autism diagnosis might be able to be served well there, and that there would be enough peer group integrated classrooms there so that inclusion could happen seamlessly. The playground facility is beautifully designed so that it is not near where cars are idling. It's up high. It has a beautiful connection to the winter solstice, so that it has the most light available. And the classrooms all have accessible, right-in-the-classroom bathrooms and hand wash. These are the important things in early childhood. Sinks for teachers. Every teacher would have a small area in the classroom where they could have a high-top spot for their computer, because now we ask most teachers to sit at the children's tables to do their work after school. So a lot of attention has been given to what our hopes were. Teachers have had input, they've seen plans, and put their sticky notes on it with all their hopes and dreams. There's never enough storage room to please early childhood folks, but we came back with some ideas from visits that we took to some of the state-of-the-art buildings that are available close by. And I've, I can't imagine a process that was more collaborative and more exciting and more fun. I did, at one point in the beginning, I came with my list of wishes, hopes, and dreams, and one of them, Alfred will be laughing at, one of them was that I was hoping for a, a large monitor when you came in so that it felt welcoming, and people could see what the program looked like by having the visuals on a monitor. And our funder looked at me and said, "Are you asking for wiring?" Perhaps? She said, "You get wiring, any kind of wiring you want. That's not a problem." Well, I had thought, this could be a really big deal. We did have an opportunity at the building we saw in Boston that had a way of incorporating community space, where people could sit and have a cup of coffee after dropping their children off. And that has now been incorporated into the plan. There's a place for people to leave their strollers and children to leave their scooters. And so it's a very walkable building, and we're hopeful that that makes it especially nice for neighbors as well. So there is nothing that we asked for that hasn't been accommodated, including changing the plan most recently to include more children of more significant compromising situations. So it's more than I could imagine. It's been wonderful. Are there other questions about it?
Ms. Feschbiel.
Yeah, hi, Vicky. It sounds fabulous. I can't imagine what a wonderful opportunity that is to create your new space. I have just a couple of questions. Are there buses that will be coming? Will people be, children be dropped off?
We have an opportunity, currently, we have quite a few vans that drop children off. If a child has an individualized education plan and lives far enough away from the site, and the drive-through that you see on that, where you see a car going in, the drop-offs are in various spots along the side, back, and on the way out. And so the children's welcoming area is actually in the back of that building, and the vans can drop the children off, as well as parents can drop children off. But the vans will be able to go through and go right back out onto Harvard Street.
Thank you. About how many students will it serve?
It looks like approximately 135, along with our intake team. But almost the entire top floor is all about welcoming families into Brookline and doing evaluations, et cetera.
And then one other, I'm sure you've talked about all the wonderful things you can request, is that in fact, it sounds like it would pretty much meet the standards of NACI?
It would be, go beyond the standards of NACI. And as a matter of fact, we moved from the standard around square footage per child, which state and federal government standards are 35 square feet, and we've moved to 50 square feet per child. So the accessibility piece, the design of the classroom so that there is quiet breakout space, there is space in the building for maker space, there is space in the building for a yoga, dance kind of space, and there's space in the building for a kitchen, a child's kitchen, workable kitchen area where we can do cooking, and we can do other science opportunities. So, yes, it would definitely meet that.
Vicky, just wanted to have you introduce the two members of your, extraordinary members of your team who are here in support of this project with you.
Yes. And I will say that the wonderful Dr. Regina Watts, in trying to protect a child from running away at, at drop-off time, has done a, a nosedive into the sidewalk, breaking her kneecap and possibly her nose, so that's the reason she's not here today, and was feeling very badly about that. Said, "I think that it will be less scary if you're not there." And we have Barbara Magid, who is a program supervisor and program coordinator for Brookline Early Education, currently supervising at the Beacon Street BEEP classrooms, and Minjen Taylor, who's been working with me all afternoon on summer programming. And so she's here. She is a HEATH pre-K teacher. Thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Ms. Scott.
First, I would like to say how excited this makes me. I am the parent of an original BEEP baby. You are. Who was born in 1973. And it has always been an outstanding early education program, even in the most compromised spaces. And I can tell you that Kent Street was not the most spacious place, or the, a place that was really designed for young children, but that didn't matter because it was still a wonderful program. I think that this, this building looks very, very exciting. It is just the kind of place where I think programs will be able to develop, and children will grow and will thrive. So I think we all are grateful for this gift to the town. But I have a grumpy neighbor question while I'm at it. Now, I'm not a grumpy neighbor, but I have a lot of experience, right? I have a lot of experience being a grumpy neighbor in a neighborhood. And I'm wondering about the house that will be demolished. Is that a historic building at all? And if so, how are you going to deal with that?
Well, and Bobby, before you start, if you could, if I could just broaden that question a little, and you can roll a little bit. I think it would be very helpful to the school committee to understand, without anticipating any opposition... the school committee to understand, without anticipating any opposition whatsoever to your project, where it, how it aligns with the zoning envelope, with parking requirements, and with anything else which are going to be some of these steps that you're going to have to walk it through in order to realize it. Because I would very much like each, each school committee member to know what's coming, what kind of questions might come from the community about the project.
No, I appreciate that, David, and I think, I think it is important because there's a good chance you will receive some emails about it. So, any process like this would start with looking at the structure first. You'd have to go to preservation. You'd have to ask for a demo permit. We have a demolition delay bylaw in town. This is not a historic district. This is not a National Register property, nor is it a National Register eligible property. So, the most they could do is a one-year stay. It is a somewhat handsome building, so they did put a one-year stay on it. However, they did recognize that it's in deplorable condition. It hasn't really been maintained. It's kind of been a business rooming house, almost, right? There's a whole bunch of businesses in there, and it was tough to see how many, but it worked for a lot of, a lot of businesses. But, but once we got in there, we realized, no heat. There was a significant amount of problems in the building. So, we did apply, and we are in the one-year stay period. And, you know, the object in the one-year stay period is to look at the building and see if it can be reused for this particular use. We don't see that opportunity available. So, what would happen is we would have to go before, we would have to file a permit. We're not going to file the permit until we actually go through a neighborhood process to make sure everybody sees it before we file it with the town. We'd rather them hear from us than get a letter from the town saying, "Hey, this is happening." We do plan on sitting to Mr. Williams, who owns the piano shop to the, to the right there. I know he's going to have some concerns. We've reached out to him early on, but we need to sit with him more. And then, the process is, we don't comply with a lot. We don't, we're over the height, where there's not a lot of parking available on this site. The use is allowed in this district, and we do meet some of the setback requirements. But the process will be, we will be using the Dover Amendment, which many of you are familiar with because many of your schools have to go through the Dover Amendment. But Dover Amendment isn't a stamp approval. We still have to comply with bulk and traffic and other issues. So, we'll go through a design review process with the town. We're hoping it's somewhat limited. We, we have a desire to put the shovel in the ground at a certain time period that would coincidentally line up with your rental structure that you have with the existing BEEP buildings. So, we hope to be open by September 19. With a 20-month construction period, you can back up and you can see that even though September 2019 seems far away to us, we all know we're going to blink and it's going to be September 2019. So, and the process takes a little while. So, we'll go through the planning board process, a design review process, and then we'll go to the zoning board, and the zoning board will have to decide whether we meet the standards under 48 Section 3 of the Dover Amendment. So, we anticipate that to be a four-month process in a perfect world. But again, the X-factor in all this is always neighbors. And, you know, we, we do want to work with the neighbors, and we're hoping that the fact that this is on Harvard Street and there's a, it is in an area that could arguably handle density, and we're also hoping that there's enough support for this program and that there's enough people like Barbara that saw the success that the BEEP had, that they would embrace this. And I know some of the feedback that Vicky has received, the parents are very excited about it. Some, right now, you know, they're different locations, so. And one other thing I'll bring up, while Vicky talked about the more exciting partnerships, we've also been talking to the town. You can all appreciate, we've been talking to Charlie about where the maintenance offices are, where the slop sink is located. So, we have included everybody as far as the inside of the building, and now we have to include the neighbors for the outside of the building. So, thank you for the opportunity to explain that.
For Ms. Fetterspiel, that's Charlie Simmons, our director, the town's director of buildings.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chek.
Again, what a lovely gift, so very exciting. Brookline obviously is a very environmentally conscious town, and a lot of the buildings, for example, the night school, there's been a warrant article about trying to make it minimum of silver leads and while trying to reach higher, maybe even platinum. You know, again, just a question about if there is plans to design the building so it at least qualifies for silver.
Come up to the microphone. Excuse me. So, our plans right now are to be certifiable at a silver lead level, and we're in the earlier stages of design, but that's, that's the goal right now.
Other questions? Ms. Tika.
Thank you. Again, very exciting. Thank you so much. Unfortunately, we spent a lot of time on buildings, and so, I'm certain you've got all these answers. But if you could just sort of tick through with us, I mean, number one, when was the last time we used Dover?
Runkel School.
Runkel, and before that?
Runkel School was the first.
So, I think it just might be worth us understanding a little bit more. When you say kind of oversight, over height, over setbacks, no parking, so just, can you just talk through a little bit more about what that will mean and what, which pieces your shadows and whatnot that you're sort of going to work through with the neighbors?
So, the Dover Amendment has been used. I recently used it for KI. KI is going through some renovations, putting an addition on, so we had to use the Dover Amendment for that. So, the, I think the largest issue, Susan, will, will be the parking, right? That's typically always an issue. We don't really have a great grasp of how many spots we'll be able to fit on the site. I think that plan that we've lost is, shows about 10, but I'm not positive that we can get 10 in there until we actually go through sort of a, work with the town engineers to understand exactly what they're looking for for drop-off and everything else. But I, we also are trying, you can appreciate this, looking at Webster Street, we're trying to find alternative locations that might be able to handle some parking. But I anticipate that would be the largest issue. I mean, neighbors never like height. That side of the street doesn't necessarily have the same shadow impact that the other side of the street would have because you don't have the single-family residents around it. Behind it is the scrub-a-dub, and so, I think the biggest issue, Susan, will be, will be talking about sort of traffic, parking, and height slash density.
And so, on traffic, so we have 135 students. How many adults would be coming every day?
I'm going to have to yield to Vicky on that, but I think it's 40?
Forty staff.
Forty staff.
Forty staff. Oh, how many adults will be showing up for drop-off?
Well, I guess, no, no, staff, because we've got 135. And do we know, I mean, roughly, would you assume that the catchment area is BEEP students who already live within walking distance?
We are.
Vicky, come up to the microphone.
I'm just trying to get a rough sense of what we're, what we're anticipating in terms of traffic. I don't need details, just roughly.
So, we, we try to accept children in the closest possible facility for people who apply to BEEP, and we try to place children with IEPs in the closest possible facility. So, some children will be eligible to come on a van, which means there's less of a drop-off. But we know, for example, that the Lynch Center, which is this same general vicinity, we do not have the parking issues that we have other places. It's a very walkable building, more walkable actually than the Lynch Center is. And it is also close enough to public transportation that that should work as well. We have found that Lynch is probably one of our most walkable spots, so we don't anticipate the kind of parking issues we see in South Brookline or even on Marshall Street. So, we're, is there more I can tell you? We never know till you're there.
No, we just always know that parking, I mean, we're, as BEEP well knows, neighborhood concerns about parking and traffic are of utmost importance, including this week. And so, I do, we just want to be as helpful as possible in this, and we just need to understand a little bit more about what the expectations might be or anticipated numbers might be so that we can.
I will say that of our administrative offices, and we probably have 15 people associated with that who currently hold permits on Webster Place, so that's a shift of people, but it is, still represents a fair number of parking permits.
So, I think that's just something. And when, roughly, maybe, Mr. Allen, in the process, are we going to get to this piece?
The zoning piece?
Parking and traffic in particular.
Uh, that will kick off as soon as we start the planning process.
Okay.
Ultimately, the zoning board can put on reasonable restrictions as long as those restrictions don't inhibit the ability to use that use.
Do you, you don't have a date yet for the community meeting?
We do have a date for the community meeting, and Jennifer's going to tell me right this, May 30th at 7 o'clock, and we're actually going to have it, the notices are just going out, but we're going to have it at the work share at, space at 202 Washington as a, as a way to get some of these people to see that really cool space down there. If you haven't seen, check it out.
And is it going out to the regular set of abutters, however the town?
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing a significant mailing in the neighborhood. I think 200 feet. The town might do 300. I, I forget what, I forget exactly what we're doing.
300 feet plus any other neighborhood organization's town meeting.
Yeah, 300 feet plus.
And all of the districts that have bought the locations.
Right. That town meeting and neighbor town meeting.
And Ms. Coyne, so that she can notify all of us so that we can come to support you?
I would, terrific. I would just note that when we did the Stop and Shop location, it might be worth specifically, maybe coordinating with the town or Ms. Bruton or Mr. Lummis on all of the people who were very active on that from a neighborhood point of view and making sure that, I mean, some of them are town meeting members, but it just might be worth specifically reaching out to them because we are, we already have a set of comments from them.
Yeah, and the town, actually, I'm glad you brought that up. The town actually recently went through sort of a traffic study as part of that Stop and Shop gas station, so we're able to benefit from some of the work that the town has done also, and we're hoping that's a savings in the long run.
Good. And I won't ask questions about things like environmental, geotechnical, all that. Should we just assume that that is getting taken care of?
Get there with it.
Okay. So, I guess my last question then is just about the cost of, we show up and there are staplers, which is fabulous, and sinks and all kinds of great things for children. What is the annual operating cost of the building and how does that, what's the sort of ongoing?
I don't think we're there. I don't think we're there yet.
Okay.
Like, I think Vicky said, we, we met as recently as today, and my guess is she probably added a whole bunch of things today, so it might have just went up today. I'm not completely sure.
Okay.
But that, that will all be part of our conversation going forward.
Okay. And I guess my very last question, sorry.
That's okay.
Actually, there are two more. One is.
My very last, second to last.
What is our process? And what role do we play, if any, in, in this as it goes forward, which is terrific?
So, I'm the liaison to the project and will be included in all the meetings that they're having, together with Superintendent Button and Ms. Dunn, but more as advisory to it because this is, you know, the foundation that's building the building. But we're working together. Does that answer your question?
It does. And my very last question is a little bit, so, so is it going to really say "beep" on it? And are people going to beep their horns and irritate the neighbors? Oh. We're hoping so. Okay. I saw Brookline Early Education Program, which was terrific. I was just curious if it's going to actually say "beep" on it.
So, Susan, a little trick from a zoning attorney? If you can put the word "beep" up there and the conversation, the public start talking about BEEP and not talking about height and park, I'm a happy boy. So, that beep is staying up there for as long as possible.
That was why it was my last question, Mr. Allen.
It's like, don't listen what I say, just look at my hand, right?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly right. That's why it was my last question. All right, thank you very much. Very exciting. Thank you, Dr. Milstein. Thank you for the entire staff. It's so exciting. We're just, as a parent of a five-year-old, I'm sorry he's missing it. So, it's, this is fantastic.
Ms. Charovsky.
Well, I'd like to say to all of you, and especially to the family that's donating this project, this has come true. This is truly, I mean, I've been on the, five years, I've been hoping for a center. Vicky and I have been talking about different places that would be wonderful to have a center and, an early childhood center, and I think it's, it's an incredible gift to the schools, and I'm, I'm just really excited and very happy to be working with you guys.
We're very excited to get going. We're very excited to meet with the neighborhood, and we're very excited for these kids to be able to go into BEEP. I always remind Vicky that I always keep my denial letter, my rejection letter from BEEP right up on my desk from, yes, but yet, I continue to support this BEEP program.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you so much.
We'll be in touch.
And we are excited to have you here and to have this project going forward.
Thank you very much.
Headmaster Meyer, welcome to the school committee. Mr. Meyer and Mr. Mason, have you had the pleasure of meeting our newest school committee member?
I have not.
Come meet Suzanne Fetterspiel.
Sorry, I was talking to the room.
All right. So, you are going to present to us the Brookline High School Competency Determination Report for the class of 2017 and the class of 2018, I gather?
It's, it's based on last year's exam, so it's mostly for the class of 2019. The, I actually know it's the current class of 2018 and some of the freshmen.
Last year's sophomores, this year's juniors.
Thank you. So, this year, you'll notice that the deck that we gave you was a little bit smaller than what we've done in the past. We decided in consultation to narrow down the presentation a little bit, make it a little simpler, talk about some of the things. In the past, we've given a lot more statistics and a lot more year-to-year comparisons on subgroups. All of these things are available. We can get them to you, but we thought it more important rather to get, which has happened some of the years that we've done this, get bogged down in some of the details of those, that we talk about some of the larger issues that are involved with the numbers. First of all, looking at the year-to-year numbers and the overall.
Can you just even step back and take it up to a higher level and contextualize this report to us?
Sure.
Thank you.
This report is designed, comes from the beginning of the MCAS era, and it's designed to talk about how did we do with MCAS and has the MCAS exam stood in the way of any individual students graduating from Brookline High? So, it goes back to a time when the MCAS first started, and the worry in town was that this, the state was going to be telling us something that we might disagree with. That is, the high school might be saying that this student is qualified to graduate, but now the state might be coming in and saying, "Oh, no," because they didn't qualify and earn a, some score on that standardized test, that the student wouldn't graduate. So, that was the initial reason why this report became an annual thing in the school committee. It has subsequently evolved into partly that, but also more of a discussion about the MCAS exam itself, where we stand on MCAS in the various disciplines, and more specifically in some of the subgroups.
And I'm just going to say, this is my first year being part of the competency determination report, so I'm going to be a little quieter as Hal walks through this, and then, it's hard for me to be quiet. I'll eventually speak up, but I'm going to, I'm learning from Hal as well.
So, the, the basic data, the essential data about MCAS is good, is really good. Our numbers remain super strong across the three measured areas. 97% of our students very, demonstrating either proficient or advanced scores, that score is over 240 in ELA, 93% proficient and advanced in math, and 88% proficient and advanced in physics, and indeed, a large percentage of those are in the advanced range. In terms of the initial, as I said, motivation for this report, we do not have any seniors this year who are not going to graduate solely because of MCAS. We still have several seniors that have not passed all sections of their MCAS, but there are other issues involved that will preclude them from graduating this year, but they are students that will be remaining with us and that we hope to walk across that stage on Cypress Field in coming years. We're going to talk more about tutoring later on, but I, we've reordered some of the slides here to move this up. One of the main ways that we help students get through MCAS is through tutoring, and it's a large part of what we do and a lot, a large part of the effort that we put in at the high school is about tutoring and about the service that we give to students that are taking the retests for MCAS and are, or students who have been identified through a number of means as students that are likely to need assistance for the test. And so, we've had specific targeted tutoring. We have people in school. We have people that come in from outside of school that work on tutoring, and it remains an essential part of the program. We have some concerns about how we're going to keep that going forward, but we will, we'll We have some concerns about how we're going to keep that going forward, but we will talk about it a little bit. We'll talk about it a little bit later.
I'll just say, we in the past have leaned on two excellent former Brookline High School teachers, George Vigliorulo -- oh, sorry, George Vigliorulo and Elaine Lombardi. So, two master teachers, George in English Language Arts and Elaine Lombardi in mathematics, and tenacious, excellent instructors. And they've now evolved out of those roles, and we're looking at different ways to provide that reteaching that is so essential.
And it -- we found it works so well to have teachers in there because a lot of the numbers that we'll see when we look at some of the breakdowns of the numbers a while are about specific kids, few kids. The difference between some subgroups could be the difference of two or three kids. So, in some cases, there are larger structural issues. In some cases, there are more troubling perhaps aspects of it as we look at it. But in some areas, it's just about how do we help this one kid? And the difference for one kid who might touch on two or three or four subgroups, and helping that kid walk across the stage is something that affects all of the numbers for the high school, and more importantly, affects that one kid and his or her ability to walk across the stage. And so, that's why we felt that the tutoring has worked so well with the two specific teachers that Mr. Meyer is mentioning, because they had great relationships with kids that for any number of reasons had difficulty working with other people, couldn't just work with an ordinary tutor from outside, but needed someone that really understood how to teach and really was able to reach kids that other people were not able to get Part of what we talk about also with the out-of-district kids, in this case, we've had five out-of-district kids who are part of the class. Three of these students will pass all three, and two of them are continuing with us in other ways. So, now we get to look at some of the more specific numbers. This is specifically for the English exam, and as you see again, the numbers are terrific. If we look at the school as a whole, we have 97% of our students in the proficient and advanced range. And if you look at the next page, you can get a percentage-wise breakdown of each of those. I'll just keep this screen up for another second. Clearly, we have a gap when we look at our Hispanic students who are consistently six to seven -- well, not consistently, but certainly lower than the school as a whole. And with our African-American students, again, we have an issue where students are five to 10 points below, in some cases, larger below the average. And again, on the next page, you get some of the details. And again, so these are percentages at each level. And again, if we look at the school as a whole, which Susan might be blocking from view, but you have it on your sheets in front of you, you'll see that for 2016, we had 76% of our students scored in the advanced range, which is outstanding. Here again, though, and it's perhaps less evident here on the English exam, but here again, the prevalence of some of the gaps that we see. And it's not just the gap that I showed you on this page. It's not just the gap. You know, that's one way of looking at the gap is the 81 versus the 97% for the African-American student versus the school as a whole. But perhaps even more telling is if you look at the detail, you see that for African-American students, 42% scored at the advanced level, whereas for the school as a whole, 76% scored at the advanced level. So, that's another gap that's there in the details that is certainly a concern and something that we feel merits much closer study for us and a plan to help improve that gap. And there are several gaps like that that you can see. If you look at all those sections up at the front, there are students with disabilities, our ELL and former ELL population, our disadvantaged population, and our high-need population. All of those cases, the -- it's not just the achievement in advanced and proficient, but it's the ratio of where they're falling in advanced and proficient that is of concern and indicates a gap. Sure. Students included, so that's your N. That's your total number of students. If you look down at the 2016 total of 471, that's the number of sophomores last year that sat for the MCAS exam. And then you see the breakdown. So, many of these categories are multiples. That is to say, a student could hit three or four of the categories in any one of those areas between Hispanic -- if you can be Hispanic, Latino, you can also identify as African-American or as white. You could be ELL and with disabilities, there's any number of those. So, you're not going to -- that column, of course, is not going to add up to 471, but rather, some kids are counted across two, three, or even four of those columns. Students included is that number. The participation rate is what percentage of students from that group sat for the exam. The percentage at each level, so again, that's the A for advanced, 260 and over score on the exam, P for proficient, that's the 240 and over on the exam, and the needs improvement level, 220 and above. The W is the warning level. That's a student that scored below 220. The CPI is the -- I'm drawing a blank. CPI is the...
Composite Performance Index.
Sorry?
Composite Performance Index.
Composite Performance Index, which is a measure of, I believe, the entire -- the aggregate of the first three columns. No, I'm wrong on that.
It's a calculation depending on where you are on advanced, proficient, and being to a warning.
It's a calculation made by the state that factors in a certain level of points depending on if a student has advanced, proficient, needs improvement, or warning. If I remember correctly, advanced, proficient get 100 points to this formula, needs improvement gets 50, warning gets -- oh, sorry, 75, warning is 50. And then from the calculated... But it's intended to show, to compare either within a school, or this subgroup, or cross schools, and it weights advanced, proficient, the equal amount, and then needs improvement and warning, a lesser amount, and designed to help you show how many folks have proficient or above, to make that an easier comparison. There's a few more factors calculated into that, but that's essentially the idea, is to show you an easier way to understand how many folks are more proficient and then compare.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you, Ben. SGP is the Student Growth Percentile, and that is a measure that compares previous iterations of the MCAS that a student would have taken in earlier grades and shows how the student has grown compared to what score they got in earlier grades. Since our scores are at a baseline so high, relatively speaking, across the board, our student growth percentile numbers are typically low, as these are, because they don't have as much room to grow. They're starting at a high level coming in from the seventh grade.
Sorry, let me just add to the student growth percentile. It takes a cohort of, let's say, student A tested in eighth grade. All of the students across the state who scored the same way as student A is then compared with them when they take the test in 10th grade. So, it compares how much our students have grown in relation to every other kid who scored the same way across the state. And so, the comparison is by peer group and not necessarily a student to his or herself, but a student to all the kids who scored like the student did the last time the student took the assessment. Hope that...
So, let's just say the last time they took it was fifth grade. It's not taking the grade that they received, the score that they received in fifth grade and comparing it to the score that they received in eighth grade, showing the growth?
No, because the test material is so different. It is really looking at what did other fifth graders who scored around the same thing, same grade that that kid did in fifth grade, how did they score? And the growth is calculated that way. So, how am I growing in relation to peers that I was once on track with?
But is it pulling at 40%, 41% or 39% African-American groups? And there are other groups, like Asian groups, that are growing 64% or 69%, which is 20 to 30-point gaps in groups of similar size, 30 to 50 kids. And it's small, it's 30 to 50 kids, to Mr. Mason's point. But the gap in growth is so profound and so telling. It's like twice as much growth as other kids. And so, I just, that's the kind of thing where any one thing can get explained, but that's what's troubling year after year. And it's just, this is not the form to talk about that, but I also don't want to look at the data and not mention it. So, I know there's a lot going on that -- to address it, but it's to be troubling.
I was just going to add, Barbara, you're right. Really, the average is considered between 40 and 60. So, you really want to be above 60 to feel that you're... So, they give you this range that says it's 40 to 60. You really want to be above 60 to feel like you're doing better than the cohort that you originally were with.
Just quickly, if I'm reading this correctly, both in ELA and in math, and maybe I'm not reading it correctly, when you get to male females at bottom, so in the W column, the warning column, there's 0%...
You want to go to math?
Well, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Both the same.
Yep.
Both have 0% of females in the warning column. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, we have very few students that land in the warning overall.
I'm sorry?
We have very few students that land in warning overall.
I understand, but there are no females. And all the ones that are in the warning area, the total student population are males.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
No?
Well, no. Did I read it wrong?
Well, I'm just confused because in the subgroup, we've got students with disabilities at 13, and then you have down male only three. So, I'm missing something.
It's a percentage.
Oh, a percentage.
It's a percentage of the total, not a raw number.
Okay, gotcha.
No, but 0 is 0.
So, correct. So, for females, 0% failed. So, your 3% of males on the -- I'm looking at the math table, but either one then breaks down, because that's a larger number. It's 3% of 246. And so, it breaks out.
Also, with an N of 224 females, for example, on this, if one female had...
No, I understand all that. But my point is that in all of the subgroups, if I read this correctly, it's only the males that are failing.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I would expect some females to... I mean, it doesn't seem, you know...
You could have some differential note, because it's a percentage, you could have something between 0 and 1.
Oh, maybe, okay.
So, it's not necessarily...
All right. It just, I've never noticed that percentage before, and it sort of just really struck me as I was looking at it.
Is that similar to... Is that a trend? In other words, do we consistently see that it's typically male students?
Do female ninth graders score better overall than male ninth graders? I would say yes. That's, that probably is a trend. You probably would see that, yeah. So, if you look at the advanced level here for female versus male, you have 87% of females in the advanced level versus 79% of males at the advanced level. And going back to English, you have a comparison of 83% of females out of the 223 scoring in the advanced level, and 69% of the males scoring in the advanced level.
But I mean, year over year?
Yeah, there's some rounding that's going on.
Which would mean there might be one...
Yeah, there could be one out of -- again, if your N is 223, you could have one student there, and it would still show here as zero. Sorry.
The question was year over year. So, I can see across this report, but looking in prior years, is that a trend?
I think we -- I can certainly get you those numbers. I'm pretty sure it will consistently show that ninth grade and 10th grade females consistently outperform males on these tests.
Ms. Fetterspiel.
So, is this -- this is MCAS, not 2.0, right? This is...
Correct.
And we didn't go to park.
Correct.
And was this done on computers, or was this done on paper pencil?
This is done almost exclusively on paper pencil. Some students have accommodations that might allow them to use technology.
Right, okay, thanks.
Okay, the Board of Selectmen awaits us, and so, thank you very much for coming in this evening and for your report. Fascinating information. Anything else?
We have a lot of work to do, which I think you all know. I mean, we've -- our numbers have flatlined for more than eight years, and there's a ton of work to do, mining the data, working on transitions between eighth grade and ninth grade, family engagement, instruction programs. We've tried to program our way out of, in some ways, out of these gaps, and you can't program your way out of these predictable gaps, and we need to look at the core of instruction and curriculum. So, I'm not saying that's easy. I don't predict that these numbers will be much better next year when we come forward. Just to be honest, there is a ton of work to do, and we take it very seriously. As you can tell, we're not particularly pleased.
Does this include any opt-outs? Did you have any opt-out?
We do not have any opt-outs.
You don't have any opt-outs at all? Wow, okay.
Other than students perhaps in the CBC program that do not opt to take the exam or might take or might take a portal basically. They might do the MCAS alt.
All right. Thank you. So, we -- do we have any new business that anyone wants to bring before the committee? Okay, so, thank you very much. We have need of an executive session. In fact, we have need of two executive sessions. And do we... Are we going to do them both? Special piece of paper. So, okay, so they need to come join us, open their meeting, and then we both need to go into executive session? Okay. So, you'll go into executive session? Okay, so we should do it separately? That's okay? Okay, so, attention, your attention, please. I move that we enter into executive session for the purpose three, to discuss anticipated litigation strategy pertaining to the proposed ninth elementary school at Baldwin because of an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the school committee's litigation position. And this is going to be a joint executive session with the Board of Selectmen. And then I... And I think we also need to vote to go into a separate executive session that will follow our executive session with the Board of Selectmen directly without coming back into open session for the purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Brookline Educators Union, Unit A, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the school committee's bargaining position. And a roll call... And then we will not come into... Wait, it says the school committee will reconvene in open session at the end of the executive session? We are not reconvening in open session when we're done. Ms. Coin, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Welcome.
All right. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Board of Selectmen.
I'm doing this. How should we do this?
There's not -- we don't have a room big enough, so I do...